Hybrid meeting of Board of Finance to order. And we need approval of our minutes. I move approval of the February 20th, 2024 Board of Finance meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you, Commissioner. Item three, presentation, Madam Treasurer Burce.
Good evening Chair Baca and members of the Board of Finance. My name is Nancy Burce and I'm your Burnley County Treasurer. Today's meeting is our quarterly meeting for the quarter January 2024 through March 31st, 2024. This quarter runs in between our first and second half collection cycles. I did hold an investment committee meeting April 18th and we are happy to say we have a new community member, Robert, or as I call him Bob, Davis. And today I have a couple of new people for you as well. I have my managers here in the audience, as well as I'd like to introduce a few new staff. You know, we always talk about staffing after COVID, and this is true. This is about the third or fourth quarter that I've been introducing new staff to you. So it is an ongoing cycle and we do have positions that are open. So please tell your neighbors, friends, family to get onto that burnco.gov/jobs. We need them. So let me introduce to you Raquel Padilla. She's in customer service right now. Actually, no, you're in special accounts. Right. She's really moving on. And then we have Cori, Cori, yeah, Cori Treheo. Did stand. Cori's our newest and she is starting out in customer service and one that you haven't been introduced before. And that's Scott. Did Scott come down? They're still in a meeting. Oh, I should have exempted him from that meeting. There you go. So thank you for taking that time. The second slide here, as we start opening the the presentation. There we go, is the agenda for tonight's presentation. The agenda doesn't change. We're just reporting out all of our great information that we have to share with you. Next slide is the property tax collections. Again, that bottom line is the 2023 that we just finished. But again, the timing is off because this is where the quarter ending March 31st. So as of March 31st, we had collected $523 million and a few other cents. So you can tell that was up a little bit from December. December, we had collected 491 million. Next slide is our property tax collections as a percentage. So as of March 31st, again, it was 60.27% of what we needed to collect. December, it was 56%. So you can see we gradually get there. The next slide is just our very familiar dashboard that we have for you there with our call volume for the quarter of 6,683 calls that we took. Delinquent collections for the quarter came in at 11 million. That's still going strong. And then our payment channels, how we get that money coming in. So you can see we get mortgage files, we get monthly payment plans, that 10-month monthly program that people who don't have a mortgage can jump into. That's really, really great for seniors and fixed income. I guess I'll be joining that shortly. So that'll be fun to see that. Also, in person and mail dropped significantly from December quarter end, and we're at 15,000. And then looking at online, 8,000. That's even dropped since December. And of course, that's the collection cycle that we just ended with. This is the lull. The next, the next point is just talking about how those quarterly collections paid out when we distributed them to the entities across Burnley County. None of the percentages changed. So it's very much the same picture. But again, you see the breakout there of the educational pieces, the county, the city and villages, healthcare, our environmental entities that we have in the state. And next, we're going to talk gross receipts. And I turn it over to my deputy, Ryan Travelstad.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Again, my name is Ryan Travelstad and I'm the Deputy Treasurer under Treasurer Burce. The report layout that I'll go through is the same as previous quarters. We'll start here with the gross receipts tax collections. And so as you can see, the yellow box, the yellow line, excuse me, on top there, still trending higher over the prior two years. The one little exception there was in the month of February was slightly below the previous years. But then if you look at the next month in March, it's quite a bit higher. So that could have just been a reporting difference on the state side. So this is essentially money that the state collects from businesses that then they then distribute to the county. So well on our way to what we have budgeted, which is the next slide here. You'll see here in property tax, we have 191.9 million budgeted through March 31. We've collected 125 and a half million. I ran some numbers today. Through today, we're around 192 million collected on property tax. So that's still, we have one more month left of the fiscal year to collect. And then on the gross receipts tax side, we're about 94% of the budgeted amount collected. And again, that's just through today. So that doesn't include next month's distribution, whatever that may be. So the next slide here talks about our bank balances and collateral associated with those bank balances. This slide only reports the bank accounts that are not FDIC insured. If you want to see a full list of the bank accounts and the FDIC insurance associated with those, it's on the monthly investment report on the county treasurer's website. But only one account had an uninsured and uncollateralized balance, and that was our Wells Fargo operating bank accounts. And they had a $7.9 million uninsured and uncollateralized balance. The next slide details the portfolio balances as of March 31st. And we can just go down the line there on the par amount column. So in our operating bank account, we had, we ended the quarter with $8 million. We ended the highly liquid portfolio with 60 and a half million dollars cash matched, which is 173 million, the core at 485, and the bond proceeds at 37, which brings us a total of 765 million at the quarter ending March 31st. And if you see on the far right column, that's the book yield associated with those investments. So you can see that we don't really like to keep a large balance in that operating bank account because it's not paying us any interest. We kind of keep that at a very minimal balance. The next slide details the maturity structure and the underlying investments in each portfolio. In the highly liquid account portfolio, you can see this is split up between three different investment accounts, the local government investment pool, and two entrefied deposit accounts with Wells Fargo Securities and Main Bank, and those all mature less than 30 days. The next slide details the cash matched holdings. And again, this, this portfolio, we have maturities that are structured to meet our anticipated payroll and debt service payments. So it's kind of takes some of those variables away from our cash flow management projections when we know that we have maturities that are there in place to fund those outflows when they come in. The next details the core portfolio. This is a bit more involved, but again, the investment type there on the left and then the maturity structure there on the top. And if you look at the far right column from the five to six-year period, previous quarters, that's kind of always been to the four to five-year range. This one, it bumps out five to six years, but it's really only because that one $10 million investment as of March 31st matured in like five years and one month. So it's still within that five-year time period. Next slide details the bond proceeds portfolio. And again, these, these investments are timed to schedule anticipated drawdowns associated with bond proceeds. So projects that are happening throughout the community, as we need to pay vendors, we have these maturities that are there to, to pay those vendors. The next slide gives a high-level overview of the liquidity of all portfolios combined. So this is a good gauge to say, hey, do we have enough cash on hand to pay bills? Because that's one thing that, one of my biggest fears is that we have a bill that comes due that we don't have cash in the bank to pay. I'm looking at this very, very regularly along with the finance team. And so this is a, a good picture there. So we can see 104 million matures less than 30 days. It's 285 less between 30 days and a year, and then it trickles on down on its way out. So very, very standard and one that makes me sleep very well at night. And finally, another slide that makes me sleep very well at night is investment income by quarter. So you can see we ended the, the third quarter with almost eight and a half million dollars of investment income, which will bring the total for the year to date to about 23.8 million dollars. So early projections are that we're going to cross the $30 million of investment income mark for this fiscal year, which thinking back in my, I think I've been with the county 16 or 17 years, we've never crossed the, the $30 million investment income mark. So yeah, I think it's a lot to, I would love to take a, yeah, say that those, those are the great things that we're doing in the treasurer's office. There's a small portion of that, but the bigger portion is that it's just the market interest rates are quite a bit higher than they have in, in the past several years. And with that, I will turn it over to Deanne Woodring with GPA, the county's investment advisor. Deanne, are you there?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, Madam Chair and members of the board, it's nice to be in front of you this evening. I do need to see the slides, or your slides are up, my slides are not up on my screen here. So I will. So interest rates continue to be extremely volatile. We continue to be at the high levels of interest rates, close to the 5% level on two-year treasury securities. I'm happy to say that the portfolio is being able to be very flexible and move up towards those numbers. And we can see that on the first page, which is the quarterly changes that occurred month to month. You will notice that because of that high infusion that we got at the end of the year, the overall balances did touch over a billion, which I know is also another earmark for the county. Those have come down as your tax turnover rolled out, but it did capture an opportunity to capture additional yield in the cash matched account, which increased up to 455 million through that cycle. And now it's back down as of March 31 to 171. The real key that we're really driving on and looking at very, very closely for the county is moving the investment core yield higher. Last quarter, we ended the period at a 355, this quarter at 367. And as that last portion of the tax turnover comes in, we'll be looking to add more to the core investments at interest rates over four and a half to five, close to 5%. So in anticipation of rates coming down into the end of next year, we want to be able to anchor down those yields that we have in that portfolio. Then as interest rates come back down, we should have a very balanced portfolio for the coming years. We've been really active with all of our accounts and making sure that we're optimized in those interest incomes. So the bottom section of this table, I'm moving my wand, but you probably can't see that. In looking at the market values, we did increase in the bond proceed account. That was additional funding that came into that account and that benefited as yields were locked in there. And then in the core account, we did add about 30 million, 35 million to the investment component. So continue to be focused on optimizing those. Next slide, please. So as far as our recommendations for change, so we're focused very much on looking at ranges and targets so that we maintain the discipline that Ryan mentioned. The highly liquid, your cash balances, we target between 45 million and 70 million. It ended the quarter at 61 million. The cash matched account can go up as high as 300 million and excess when you have the turnover. That ended the quarter at 171. And then the core account at 460, we are looking to move that up as we have additional funds to optimize the portfolio yields that we're seeing in the market. Next slide. So remember, within our portfolios, we have the cash match portfolio. That's allowing us to reduce the liquidity balances. The cash match portfolio is working out great for the county. We're looking at payrolls, we're looking at debt service, we're pre-funding all of that. So as those maturities come due, earning pretty decent yields, we know that those automatically go back to cash. And then that allows us to anchor down the core investment portfolio. So our recommendation for this quarter for the cash matched account is to continue to work with Ryan's team there in matching the payroll and debt service as excess balances occur, or letting those sweep back to be used for those funding needs. Next slide. So additionally, in the core account, we're very focused on getting our durations on top of the benchmark. So on the right there, you'll see the benchmark of the duration is 210. We have the portfolio as of March 31 at 212. So the terminology we use is that is slightly longer, but basically neutral to the benchmark. So we want to get the portfolio in that position. So as interest rates come down, we have the anchor and locked in. Also, prices should reverse and instead of us going in negative movements, we'll, we'll appreciate and the price will rally. So we'll actually start to see some gains in some of the positions that we have, which we haven't had for a while. So we have upcoming maturities of, in May, and June and July each month. And our recommendation for that is to continue to match that to the maturity buckets that we have in the target of the benchmark. So right now, we're slightly overweighted the four-year, a little bit underweighted in that four to five-year area. So we'll continue to focus on those two maturity buckets. And when we look at the maturity structure and the strategic structure of the portfolio, you can see we're pretty aligned to the agency and treasury components that we're targeting. We have 49% in agencies and our target is 50. So we're on mark. We're a little overweighted to treasuries at 39% versus 30%. That's primarily due to the additional yield spread in the super nationals that we aren't seeing. So we're going to continue to stay with treasuries when we don't see added value in the other sectors. And then in municipal market, the spreads on New Mexico bonds are just really tight. So we have not been adding it to that sector, but continue to look for opportunities to diversify into the munis when we can. And then in the bond proceed portfolio, focused on your direction as to when the cash flows are coming in. The team there has just been excellent at mapping out cash flow needs. And we did invest over this last quarter with some new bonds that came into the portfolio. We will take the direction and your, your voting today is that we take the recommendations from the staff team there on how to invest and where to invest on the bond proceeds. So with that, here is your summary of recommendations for approval with the cash match that will continue to reinvest as directed by staff to meet cash flow needs. The core fund will be reinvested with the core amount size that we currently have up to 550 million, which will only be moved as the longest liquidity is, is met. And then with bond proceeds, we'll invest at the direction of the finance team. And that is our report, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Okay. Nice to see everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Appreciate it. On the next slide, we just talk about other office news. There's a lot that, that is going on that's operational. And we'd just like to capture that for you and, and tell you about it. One is internally, this is generally the time for us to dust off that investment policy that's been sitting there for a year and open it back up, see if we have any misspellings. I know Ryan's already told me he found a couple. And I said, oh darn, I thought I checked that. But the other thing that Deanna talked about was about the core, our core portfolio. And as we were talking with the working group and the investment committee, we were talking about the, the core. And we know there's required reserves. We know those required reserves are what we think are going to never ever be touched. So we're looking at, maybe we go beyond six months, six years. Maybe we really divide those out for you, the Board of Finance, and for, for myself and my team as the treasurer's office, to really look at what's required reserves versus what's money that's trickling into that ladder and that cash match? And would that help you when you're talking about budget? Would it help finance? Would it help the county manager to know that, to be more transparent instead of just glumping it together? And that's my highly technical term for the meeting, glumping. But so we'll be working and taking it through our working group, taking it through the investment committee, and probably looking at the August Board of Finance meeting as the next time we present any investment policy changes to you. So we want that well-vetted so that everybody can be at the table to look at that. Excuse me. The next one is we had our annual internal audit. We have a internal audit every year on our investments. And this one is complete and it has been sent to the larger county audit committee. And I believe their report, that should be coming to you for approval in June, I, I believe. So, so that'll be part of that package that you'll see. But we finished it and it's completed. As we talk about 2023 tax collections, with the second half ending May 10th, it really transitions us to you all think of, oh, it's time for the budget to close and the budget to open for July 1st. Our task is July 1st, we report to the state tax and revenue department what our delinquencies are. So we're looking at moving right into delinquent collections. And we send out reminder notices, the delinquent notices, usually around this time, because we, we want it collected pretty fast. If people forgot, you know, they, they missed a payment, now's the time to get it in. We really are concerned about the over two years. Because if you're over two years delinquent, those are the ones that are going to get, quote, turned over to the state, meaning the state will take over the collections of those accounts. We get the tax money, they get to keep the penalty and interest. We really don't like that because what is also on the statute, statutory books is taxation and revenue can also auction. We never like to take people's homes. We try and work with them for as long as we can to set up payment plans. So does the state, but I know just having that option is concerning to people. They're already under pressure because they are delinquent. So we like to help as much as we can on that. So that's what's coming up. The report's due to the state July 1st. I want you to know that because if you hear your constituencies, if they call, you know, they, they, they say, I've got this delinquency. Definitely have them call us. We have a fantastic team who will work with you, who will explain the process and just get that feeling out there of, let's work through this. You know, people get delinquent all the time, life happens. Let's see what we can do and kind of put them back on track. So that is coming up. Also, the next bullet is community outreach and festivals. It's that time in spring and summer when we start. We know Commissioner Casada starts us off with his South Valley Day. So thank you very much. It was a great, great event. And all those wonderful improvements at that West Side Center. Wow, just wow. Thank you so much. And coming up Saturday, we have Commissioner Benson's Evening in Paradise. So everybody get out, put your shorts on, come on. Starting at what, 3 o'clock, Commissioner? 3 to 8. Okay, you know, I'm there. And a final update on our digital wallets. We came to you several months ago about, and the only update is in talking with this vendor, we did say, okay, we'll take your vendor name off, but we're still going to have that warning out there about generic digital wallets because it is confusing a lot of people. I know a lot of people now, much younger than me, don't have checking accounts. They bank electronically. They don't have a check to send. I say go online, but some of them go, no, I want to use this vendor over here that my bank has. That's fine. It is creating some issues with us because they don't know what to put on the checks and that kind of thing. So we just took off the vendor name and just said, you know, be careful. Anytime in the financial world, be careful. There's stuff out there that isn't reasonable to use. So that's the update on that. And I stand for any questions. You know, there's still your reports online on our website for the performance matrix, metrics, excuse me, that we have, as well as the tax maintenance report where you can see every month what we send to those entities. And, you know, constituents are always curious about that. But I stand for questions.
Any questions of Treasurer Burce? Any questions of Treasurer Burrs?
No.
Okay.
Well, have a great evening.
Well, with that, I move to give advice and consent to the proposed quarterly investment strategy as outlined in the Board of Finance report. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you, Treasurer. Thank you, and all the staff. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all as well.
Announcements of our next Board of Finance meeting will be Tuesday, March 27, 2024, at 4:00 PM in the Kensington Sanchez Commission Chambers.
Madam Chair, my apologies. The next meeting is August 27, 2024.
August 27, going back in time. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.